Justin, would you lead us in our implication?
Yes, sir. Please pray with me. Dear heavenly Father, God, we love you. We just praise your name for all things. Lord, we thank you for the many blessings you give. God, thank you for the safety that you continue to give us. Lord, thank you for our law enforcement, for our fire department and EMS. God, thank you for keeping them safe. We pray that you just continue to keep us healthy. And we ask for wisdom from our leaders. And we ask that everything that we do tonight be in honor of you. We love you, with your name we pray. Amen.
Thank you. Ms. Mathel, would you lead us in the pledge?
I pledge allegiance to the Father, to the United States of America, to the Republic of Washington, one nation, united in the Constitution of Justice.
All right, we'll go ahead and convene our meeting. Justin did ask me to remind everyone, please speak up. We do have the microphone in the center of the room. It worked very well at our last meeting. I thought, if you watch it on YouTube, you can hear everyone really well. So, please, please do speak up as we move through the meeting. And we'll go ahead and get started with our roll call. Misty Cottle.
Here.
Jeff Upton.
Here.
Jan Drogmorden.
Here.
John Collins.
Here.
Kara Hungate.
Here.
Don Rollins.
Here.
Joe Toward.
Here.
Dan Lee Knight.
Here.
Our city attorney and city clerk are both present. So, the first item on our agenda is the adoption of the agenda. Are there any changes anyone else knows about? I do have a couple. So, we have, under old business, we have our Zoom practice meeting. They should read June rather than May. And then we need to add an item of new business, item five. It's a contract with Garver for professional services. They are going to facilitate that Zoom meeting for us. So, we have a contract that we need to approve for that. You good with that? Do we have a motion?
I'll make a motion. And we accept it with the changes.
Okay. If we have a motion, second, all those in favor say yes.
Yes.
Those opposed, no. That motion carries. Next is the approval of our meeting minutes from our May regular meeting. Are there any changes that need to be made on those?
That motion is being accepted.
Second, if we have a motion, second, all those in favor say yes.
Yes.
Those opposed, no. That motion carries as well. The next item on our agenda is our public forum. We allot two minutes per speaker. If anyone from the city would like, or anyone from the community would like to address the council, just keep in mind that the council won't act on any, anything that's brought up there in the public forum, but we will ask questions or reply. So, with that said, do we have anybody that would like to speak? Yes, ma'am. Tell us who you are.
My name is Michelle Linkler. Can you hear me?
Yes, ma'am.
I came here to really talk about the Heritage Cooperative Garden. Don't worry, I'm not asking that we do it again. Because I listened to the report, although you could not hear it the last portion of last week's, last month. We just don't want to go out being called the Rotten Tomatoes. I want to cover three areas. One, the history. Two, statistics from last year. And finally, address the accusations of our forced stewardship. The area where the garden is was part of citizens who formed a nonprofit in 2007. Which, I think some of you may know that, you may not. Besides the Heritage Garden and the recycle center, they also, I'm not sure whether they did more than that, but I think the farmers, farmers helped at that time. In 2009, the master gardeners lent their support for some time. I'm not aware when the garden was longer, no longer used except by one or two people. At some point, the Boy Scouts helped. So, that's the history. If you have any questions about that, let me, let me know. Our group, which is South, a South Washington County Omni, which is different from the master gardeners, were a group of people under Omni for Center for Peace, Justice, and Ecology in Fayetteville. I know it sounds a little radical, right? But we gathered once a month and listened to people like Don Steinkrauss from the university. He is entomologist. And from Joe Neal, I think you might know him, he's a birder and a biologist. And then we decided we wanted to do something for the community. So, we talked to among each other because food insecurity is important around here. It was 50% at the time that we saw it. And now, you know, it must be booming. So, we, we thought doing the garden would be a great thing. So, Mayor Rosetti sanctioned it. And we had our first garden in 2017. And then some of the volunteers were master gardeners. It was not until later that they became sanctioned to be able to earn certain hours in order to stay a master gardener. Because I just want you to know it was separate. But a lot of people came to work on that. All right, statistics. We gave away 575 pounds of food this year. And we had 1,100 volunteer hours. And most of those came from about 15 people. People who are my age or older and maybe a little younger than I am. So, we worked hard. And then stewardship. I want to address the accusations of stewardship that came in your letter. It's in public now. Overgrown weeds and unpicked vegetables, that was disgraceful and disrespectful. The reality of this is that the volunteers gracefully and respectfully replanted the garden three times this season. Why was that? Because it rained. The weather played havoc on us. So, I think you can all understand why they did that. We also had accusation of that, a year or two ago from you. And it turned out to be false. I think it would have been respectful to talk to some of us about that before saying, you got to cancel it. And then the letter from Jane Bryan asked if the city could help. Although it's her words, I can't speak to it. I think she was just asking for discussion, not a reprimand. We are very grateful for heaven having water. And they did that a long time ago. Because we couldn't have done it because we're trying to maintain our own gardens and that garden. And I appreciate that Jan said, well, maybe we could do better next year. But we're not going to do it next year. Because it's, it's too much trouble to be ostracized. And last and not least, I really don't know what that line about dictating who could come into the garden meant. We were like joyous when somebody would come and volunteer. So, did somebody say that we didn't want them in there?
Yes, there, there were accusations that people didn't feel welcome in the group. Yes.
We like practically ran to them.
I think, I think the line that you're referencing was that Jane was saying she would just cancel it, the garden herself this year.
I'm sorry?
She was referencing that she would just cancel it on her own this year. She would make that decision.
Jane?
Yes.
That's correct.
And, and that was where my line came from. I, I didn't, I wasn't aware that she was the one that controlled it.
Right. She's not actually.
Oh, okay.
And I think that that, that, that is my, our fault. And probably mine most because I was one of the first, I was one of the first organizers of something. So, we, we could have done more. But we, and the other thing is, we didn't know about it until it was brought up about these things in the garden. And so, you did, I don't know that you went to Jane or not at first. So, when it happened, which was in the summer, I think somebody should have been notified then. And the people said they weren't welcome. They should, you, somebody should come and tell us that too. Because how can we do it if we don't know? When these people that work there, they work hard, it's lonely, it's hard. And we loved it and we miss it.
Any comments from the council?
That's why there wasn't any discussion last week either. It's a big deal. How did he ever went to the garden? None of the council members.
Sorry, I have my own garden.
Well, so we all have our own gardens. And we were giving the food away to people who needed it.
Well, I'm not retired, so.
Well, I wasn't retired. And we're, and I'm not saying that you should have come and worked with it. They didn't want to look at it.
Should be respectful. Sure. Any other questions?
Oh, I know, it's two minutes.
All right.
Anyway.
Thank you, Michelle.
Yep.
Anyone else? Yes, sir. Stand up, tell us who you are.
My name is Paul. I don't live in the city limits.
That's okay.
Okay.
You live in the community, right?
Why did they close the garden? Only because, I just heard that conversation. Could you tell me why the garden was closed?
I don't think the garden ever was closed, sir.
Okay.
The, the city has never closed the garden.
But the gates were locked.
All the stuff was taken out of there and so.
Oh, I see. Okay.
Yes, sir.
So, then I don't know what I'm talking about. Okay, I'm here for the recycling center.
Yes, sir.
Could you tell me what the decision of y'all is on reopening the recycling center?
Yes, we have it on our agenda tonight. It's a piece of old business.
Should I sit down and wait?
No, I won't, I won't make you do that. I don't think we're going to get to it because I don't think we have a decision. On the recycle center, the recycle center has turned into a trash dump. And we have, we have hit Facebook, we've hit many avenues trying to explain that we're not, we're not going to be picking up trash every weekend.
Agreed.
But it continues. We have, as a city, provided curbside recycling as an option to recycle. The amount of material that we're taking in at the recycle center hasn't changed that much. So, that tells me that, one, residents weren't recycling when it was just the recycle center. Or, two, we're getting a lot of county recycling in our center. And so, that's when we started looking at other options. If it's going to be a trash dump and it's outside city limits, individuals using it anyway, why are we picking this, maintaining it? Why are we running stuff over to Prairie Grove to get rid of it? And running a recycle center is more expensive than what people think.
I understand.
Yeah. So, that's what has went into, hang on just a second, Isaac, I see. That's what's went into our discussion about, do we close it, do we keep it open?
But you haven't made that decision.
We have not made that decision. We are working with Boston Mountain Recycling for an alternative. And part of that alternative is Boston Mountain Recycling is going to put a trailer over there for use that they are going to man. It's not going to be inside of the chain link fence. It's going to set out in, in broad daylight to hopefully cut down on some of that.
So, what options in the city of West Fork looked at to make it right again like it used to be here? I'm not being clear?
Not to me, you're not.
Okay. So, as opposed to saying, we have a trash dump, let's just close it down. There are other options. And unless I'm mistaken, y'all charge city residents a couple of bucks? I don't know what it is you charge them for, curbside pickup?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Is that?
I think it's about $2 a month.
Okay, so say two bucks, okay. I might make a suggestion that if truly we want to continue as a community, not just a city, but as a community, to recycle, and I won't get into the politics of worldwide blah blah. We all know what happened when China shut it down.
Sure.
You know, we all know that, okay. What would be wrong with, was it paid volunteer?
Yes.
What would be wrong with having a paid volunteer? And are the young folks that were doing community service, are they not available anymore?
So, just speaking, me to you, I think the term paid volunteer is an oxymoron. It's two, two words that don't go together.
I understand, but there was such a beast.
You either pay somebody or they volunteer to do it.
There was such a beast here.
There was, I agree.
Yes, okay.
But to me, you either pay someone as an employee or someone volunteers. The volunteers have ran out in West Fork. And, and I understand why. They, they put in a lot of blood, sweat, and tears into that.
No more community service kind of stuff, is that what you're saying?
Are you talking about community service from, from inmates? Who are you, who are you talking about?
I think some of the kids got caught speeding or something and they had to spend an hour or two. I don't know exactly what the whole thing, somebody can enlighten.
And, and we are, we have talked to the judge about a program like that. Not necessarily pertaining to recycling, but.
Right, right.
But let, let me let Isaac update us on what he and Boston Mountain have came up with.
So, Robert Reed and Isaac Paul. Starting, coming to Saturday after the fourth, we are willing to have a Saturday night and noon. They will come over. We, we will man it for that three hours. It will be available for everybody to regular recycle, just like, just like it was. But it'll all be outside the fence. And noon, we'll pull the trailer back in to walk it down. So, we can eliminate the trash. We're, we're looking at doing that one weekend a month. If we start getting a bunch, maybe we, we'll look at a second weekend. But park work will be 24/7. But park work right out, out there at the park lot. We've got park work off, a dominance kind of workout agreement where they do all the recycling going, we don't do any of that. We just pay them 7/7.
So, am I hearing correctly, it's kind of boiling down to dollars?
To some extent, yeah, dollars are definitely involved in it. It's not just dollars.
May I make a suggestion?
Sure.
If folks in the city of West Fork are willing to pay $2 for you to pick up their recyclables, why don't you sell me a sticker for a monthly fee that goes on my way to you? And from that money, pay a, not a volunteer, pay someone to override and say, oh, no, you can't throw that brown bottle in with the wind, however that works, okay? I'm willing to pay for it. I'm not looking for nothing. And the people I've talked to said, you know, we come down, we recycle, we go to the farmer's market. Again, you know, it's, it's a community, it's not just downtown. So, just a suggestion, you know.
We'll take it under advisement.
Yeah, that's all.
What'd you say your name was?
Paul.
Paul? Where you live at, Paul? On Spielman?
I live 156.
Any questions for Paul?
Paul, I got the answer covered.
All right.
Well, Paul, I do appreciate that you came with some solutions and ideas. So, thanks for coming.
Absolutely.
Some ideas, so thank you.
Would anyone else like to address the council tonight?
I have two things that a lot of people have been asking me about. Swimming down at Riverside Park and citywide cleanup. When are they gonna, when are we going to open swimming backup? And are we doing a citywide cleanup?
So, how do I want to answer that, Chad? I want to be truthful, truthful. So, the truth is, the city has put up signs that say, no swimming. The truth is, the city doesn't have the authority to regulate swimming in a public waterway. But we put up signs and a lot of people obey those signs. And we have cut down tremendously on the gathering in that park. And that's what we were trying to do is, everybody knows that park, this time of summer, there may be 300 people down there shoulder to shoulder. In our attempt to help with social distancing in this time of, of the coronavirus, we're doing everything, we, we did open up the park and we had the park reduced as well. But swimming is the draw to Riverside. So, we put up the signs. Hang on, sir. So, I don't know when we will reopen that. I don't, it, that's going to kind of depend on what the state does and what coronavirus does. We may leave those signs up all summer just to try to reduce that. Now, that being said, we have definitely seen the amount of people we would have at Riverside Park and then some move to other areas. We will hear a, a statement a little bit later about what we're doing to address that. And then the citywide cleanup is probably going to go to a one cleanup late summer, early fall. We're still working out the details. Christie, is that right? We're still working out the details on that. We are talking to them about how we're going to do it and what we're going to do, but we are planning one, yes.
Because they used to give us two free ones.
They just can't now with the coronavirus, they're not going to. They don't, the company doesn't want to have to touch other people's trash and curbs that either. So, they, they've asked for us to put it all, they're, they're not saying they won't do two. We just don't know when we can get them in this point. So, that's why we kind of have talked about just trying to make people in there. When we can.
I mean, my thoughts on that, if somebody misses it, then they're keeping all that stuff maybe. I mean, I've had several people constantly ask about the cleanup.
Oh, I know, it's, it's huge.
I mean, I can drive by people's yards and tell that maybe they're waiting on it. But I've also seen mattresses on the interstates. You know.
Yeah, and we are trying to get something put together with that. And I know other cities, other cities have went ahead with their cleanup. I know inland is, is kind of one to hold off on it. And I get that. So, we, we are in contact with them. We, we are planning to do something, it's just a matter of when and when. Anybody else for the public forum? Yes, sir. Come up, tell us who you are.
Good evening, everybody. My name is Clay Sullivan. I'm not currently a West Fork resident. My wife and I are in the process of purchasing some property here. We hope to be closed and done with that near the end of the summer. But obviously, I didn't plan on coming here and speaking to anybody. But just in the vein of what we were just talking about, the property that we're in the process of purchasing includes the recall.
Bless you, sir.
So, obviously, just in terms of, you know, what was just mentioned, we've been down there several times over the last month or so. Obviously, lots and lots and lots of people, lots and lots and lots of garbage. So, don't really have anything to say. Ultimately, just wanted to introduce ourselves to the city. We're trying to learn about the area. We live in Fayetteville right now. But hopefully, in the near future, we will be in West Fork and, you know, be here for the rest of our lives. But that's really it, just.
Are, are you guys going to hang around for the rest of the meeting?
Absolutely, yes. And I'd love to speak with anybody individually afterwards.
Well, and if you'll wait for our police report, he's going to touch on what we're trying to do for the recall as it currently sits. So, that, that may be of value to you as well.
Okay, thanks much.
Thank you. Anyone else? Yes, sir. Tell us who you are.
Yes, I'm Greg Koraleski. I live down in Greystone subdivision.
Didn't even recognize you.
Yeah, I know, but the mask is doing something. But I live down in Greystone subdivision. The last time you probably remember me, it was for the water issue.
Yes, sir.
It's getting worse, but that's okay. Work, they're working, I see they're working on it downstream. So, the reason I'm, I'm brought here today is it's a frustration issue. And you're probably not going to be able to do much about it, but I think it's very important to the community and I need to bring it up. It also involves the receptionists at the police station. So, basically, I've been a cyclist for over 40 years of my life. I'm 63 years old. 30 years was competitive with racing. So, I have a lot of experience on bikes. I have good handling skills. If I didn't have good handling skills, I would probably have been in the hospital multiple times. So, out of the last, so I just started riding again because I had surgery, blah blah blah, recovering. Doctors kind of gets me back on the bike. So, out of nine days, I had 13 cars on 71B south of West Fork try to hit me purposely. 13 times, that's more times than in the 40 years I've been riding a bike. So, you kind of take that on as, as a cyclist. But with my experience, it's not impacting as much. If you get some younger kids out there and somebody makes one of those moves like that, and it's, it's not good. So, for West Fork, it's not a good thing. That's why, or because it's the terrain and the road layout, that's almost the only way to get to the majority of the bike routes that are supported by Northwest Arkansas. So, I went onto BikeNorthwestArkansas.org and looked for the rules of the road. The state doesn't consider a bicycle a vehicle, but it does recognize that bicyclists have all the same rights as a car. I have all the statutes here, I can leave this copy with you. But a lot of these items are education issues. And I think the city has part, a part responsibility. And the police definitely have a part of the responsibility. Passing a cyclist must do so with not less than three feet. Like I said, somebody comes in a foot, for me, I'm, I'm okay. I would, I, we would do races at 40 miles an hour coming into the finish, handlebar to handlebar, you know, but those are all experienced guys. Car does that, they come up so quick, they're there and they're gone. So, you know, it, it's, it's a bad thing. Stay on the right side of the road, which I do. And mandatory use of bike lanes is not required by the state. And most people think that's where bicyclists belong. You can ride on the sidewalk in Arkansas, but it's not, I wouldn't, I wouldn't recommend it. If you like, if you, if it's even have somebody come at you at 25 miles an hour or 20 miles an hour, I mean, if you've been on the trails in Fayetteville, that's kind of what happens. So, anyhow. So, the reason I'm here today, in 2018, shortly after I started riding again, I was almost hit. I flagged down an officer from West Fork who happens to be the chief now. Talked to him about it, finished my ride, came back. And on the way back to town, I figured, well, I'll stop and see what happened. So, it turns out that he knew who the person was. He was a resident of, you know, our area, lives on 71. And he says, well, the guy's almost 8 years old. Doesn't really figure into the picture. Beginning at the top of this, it says, driving is a privilege, not a right. People here.
Where, where is South, where?
See, the two guys, well, I, I go across the bridge and then I turn right onto 71B. And I ride out through.
Because we tried, how far out? Where is?
Well, that's what the lady asked me today, well, where's the beer station? I don't buy you, where's the beer station?
Well, I'm telling you about, about, what, 500 feet? Has that flashing yellow line, what, how, maybe a half mile? Think that long?
Not even half mile.
Not even that, that's Washington County.
So, I'm not going to dispute those things, but.
Well, I'm just letting you know, you need probably voices from Washington County for it.
Right, and I have. And now, that'd be in my story, then you'll be very interested in what comes up. So, anyhow, so all those times, so today, when I called the non-emergency number, after it happened, this all happened, the woman who answered the phone, she did nothing to de-escalate it, escalate the situation. Yeah, she actually got me more angry. And some of her questions, her first question was, was it in the city limits? Then it was, she kept asking for the description of the car and the plate number. When you're doing 50 miles an hour and you're doing 20, I'd give anybody $100 if they could tell me the make, model, and license plate of a car like that. Because it ain't going to happen. So, and even these beds that are treated, they're not going to be able to do that. So, anyhow, sorry, you got me kind of off base there, but. Oh, and then she, so then what really got me going, she said, she kept asking me for the description and the plate, but wouldn't let me time to talk. And then, and then she says, well, what do you want us to do? And I told her, you know, to do your job or help, help police this. And then she says, well, do you want us to follow you around? So, at, at that point right there, that person either would be fired going out for a reprimand or a Center for Sensitivity Training. Because that's not a person you want in a front-line position like that. Because I'll guarantee you, I would have called the cops again. Because they're doing nothing. And this is from 2018 to 2020, there's been no change. It's actually gotten worse. And I live here, you know, I know what roads to ride on, but they're, they're limited, you know?
Well, let me, let me ask you a couple of questions.
Sure.
I ride a lot too. I was a cat pre- rider, used to race, still ride a lot. Have a residence outside of town on, just beyond town where the old junky mobile homes are.
Mm-hmm.
Couple of questions, what time of the day are you riding? Because that's my cycling route, I'm.
This, I've been, I've been purposely going out early, but, but like 8 to 8:30. I try to leave the early workers get out.
The first drift.
And I'm always going south. So, 90% of the people are going towards, so they're going north.
Are you riding a red, with a red strobe under your seat?
Oh, yeah, I got a red strobe, I'm riding away line, I mean, everything I can. But like I say, they come up so quick.
Well, and so here's my final question. They intentionally, I've had better luck than you apparently. I mean, well, you, you have bumper drift and you're always going to have that. People are doing this instead of driving. That's my biggest fear. They swerved off to hit you or was it bumper drift?
Today, the, and, and I, after I thought about it and all this went on, I spent all days schooling and looking at the laws and writing this all up and preparing to come down here. and writing this all up and preparing to come down here. There is one car, it's been three times now, all within the same amount of time. Well, I'll be waiting for them tomorrow, and I'll follow them and find out where he lives. I'll get a picture of his car, I'll get a picture of him, get a picture of his house. Because that's the only thing that the police are gonna recognize. And I get that. They just can't. They're running around looking for people. But right after he hit me, and that's where I ride, I ride up to the.
He hit you? He struck you?
No. If I would not have turned off of the road, he would have hit me. Because what he did, beats the horn, by that time, he's right next to you.
So, it's not bumper drift. It's harassment.
Oh, yeah. And then when he goes past, as he's getting past you, he swipes over, and both of his wheels were a foot on the right side of the fog line. That's intentional.
Well, that's, you know, there's so many riders there. Keith Tyson rides out there. That's the main recreational route now. And.
That's a jewel in Arkansas.
I understand that, and I agree with you.
That's a problem.
But as a council member, what I'm saying, and as a rider, I ride three, four times a week. What, what would the city do if you're outside municipal limits on a state highway? There's nothing.
Well, can't you, can't you work with, partner with the state and get some signs put up there? I mean, if you look on a weekend, there're probably more cyclists on that road than our cars.
Yeah, there's.
And then you got a few people that are taking my rates away.
And it's even worse now, because there are Jersey barriers up, because the highway traffic department and subcontractor.
Driving is a privilege. Maybe those people shouldn't have licenses.
Riding is a privilege too, and I enjoy the bike trailer.
It is a privilege, but if I do everything in my power to make it a privilege, and people are still going after me, about what?
Well.
So, now I gotta go.
Now, I should dive down. We have our boundaries.
Well, I get that. But you can talk, you can talk with one. It's probably easier than I can, or, you know, or any of the others. See, that's the problem.
It's not the individualized. If I call Washington County, tell them to white collar me. You know what they're gonna tell me? It's not a different.
Well, the time I talked to you, I had the license plate, the description of the car. I actually took you.
And you know what? Because if I'm, probably unless they finish, I'd probably still would get a while to find and talk to him.
Well, talking to them doesn't get it done. I mean, whatever.
So, sir, so, sir, so get a GoPro.
Well, I have one on the front, one on the back, and you guys will have it. I have a website, a shame site, and it's gonna, I'm gonna track these people down.
No, put it on your hand. And bring it to chief, and chief will tell you where you are. I will. I will.
I have one forward going back, because the back one, the back one does no good. That way, we license them. That way, we can tell where you're lying.
A green wheel on the white line.
Well, I will, I will. I stand by it. We're also gonna make a shame site and start.
All right, we're gonna, we're gonna go ahead and get back to order, but great. Thanks for coming in.
Thanks.
Definitely give us some, if you, if you get us some, something to go with.
Well, I, you know.
I think we could, we could try to help, but, but do understand, we do have limits.
So, do we keep hearing, I didn't hear that safely before you?
Okay.
All right. Would anyone else like to address the council for two minutes?
Four ten.
Okay, we're gonna close the public forum. Do you want ma'am?
So, it means who you are, when you get two minutes.
Well, technically, with all due respect, it was closer than I.
All right, so let's move into our business reports. Up first, planning commission, Walter Harnish.
Evening. Not much. We didn't have our May meeting, so nothing to talk about there. We're still hoping, as far as I know, we're gonna have the June meeting, right?
So, Jennifer and I discussed this a little bit earlier. Would you mind sending out an email to the commissioners and just see how they feel about meeting? I know we're getting, we're getting some extra positive tests come back in this area. So, I don't want to make anyone uncomfortable. We do not, at this time, have anything pressing for, as far as, you know, somebody needs a lot split to get business completed. So, if you would, reach out and see how they feel about it. I would love for you guys to get back to meeting, obviously, social distance, but I don't want to make anyone.
Right, not dangerously.
Yeah.
Okay, yeah. Well, then, that's, that's where we stand, is then, so hopefully, we'll see if we can have a meeting, or see where we're going with that.
And so, a couple of items to make you aware of. The property on Highway seventy-one with the small cottages has sold. So, I think we'll probably be seeing some movement there in the near future. I was also contacted from a developer looking at some of the property along Highway seventy-one as they're, they're kind of monitoring our sewer progress and looking to, to potentially put in some housing developments along that area. So, and then we have the pending sale of the wreck hole property that we just heard about. So, potentially, you guys.
We've got some business coming.
Yeah.
Okay, good deal.
All right, any questions for Walter? Thank you, sir. Next is our library report. Shannon Reed.
Our virtual summary program starts on Monday. And the sort of curbside pickup today, so everything's going smooth with that. It's a learning process for us as well, but I think we're all excited to get it started. We have about thirty participants so far, and our registration ends on Saturday. Based on the opening plan, we continue to talk about it. We are ready. We have some furniture that's on the way, but we're ready to open. We're just waiting on our county director. As she keeps getting our opinions on what we're thinking with the numbers, it's hard to know exactly. So, we're following their lead. One library in our county did open and has gone back to curbside. So, we want to make sure when we decide to open that it's, that, you know, we want to continue to do so, so we're less confusing to the community. And we want, we definitely want to open. Our curbside's doing well. We can still receive to curbsides with printing and faxing. And the only thing that we're struggling with is computer usage, and that's what we in our community needs. So, maybe we could start with appointments for computers and phase into it that way. So, that's another option for us. And we did, out of our building, we have about ten thousand dollars that it's noted in there that we're spending on some furniture. It's end panels, display cases, and shelves with backs, so our items don't fall behind. So, we might talk about that a little bit in the meeting. And then we're working with Appleseats to also provide vegetables for our craft curbside pickup. So, it's another thing to tie into the themes, whether it's Jeff and the Beanstalk or something like that. Maybe we can have some cool vegetables in our cool craft curbsides. Those are our things.
Any questions for Shannon?
Shannon, I just want to say I enjoy your thing on Facebook. I got to sit and go watch you, because I really get my content once a week.
Did you sing along?
I did.
Anything else for Shannon? Thanks, Shannon. Court report, Tracy?
I didn't have the word. All right, so minus words, we're down about six thousand this month, six thousand dollars. And we had about one hundred and fourteen citations this month from last month. Mine's not for sure how that worked out. That's just everything that went through the board. And we did have a lot of, like, we issued thirty-two, failed to appear, so failed to bank. And that was down a little bit, down ten or twelve. But as I mentioned before, we have an access to the county account yet. We're waiting on it, just to get people on change. So, we kind of reached out and say, hey, wait, I totally forgot about this with the COVID thing. And we just got a little bit of slack. I'm sure those will start going again probably Thursday.
Okay.
So, we'll have that, like, handy to turn into.
Any questions for Tracy? Thank you. Chief Nelson, you'll give us the police report?
I've got, we had a hundred and eleven citations this month, a hundred and two warrants. We have three hundred and forty calls for service, which is down from four hundred and sixty last year. And we had thirty-seven warrants issued. I had some questions on our audio visual, if we have body cams, if we can use them. We have, we have body cams, and we have cameras inside our cars, but they're not the most expensive. We can't afford the most expensive. For our body cams to turn on, the officer asked a member, and it's in our policy. That policy, they have to go up here, touch it, and pull it on. Hasn't been forgotten. I'm sure it hasn't from time to time. But where we, how we cover that is our in-car cameras, the ones that we have. As soon as they turn on the ignition, that camera's rolling the whole time. It waits till, I think, thirty seconds after they turn off the car to kill the camera. So, we do have policies. If you'd ever want to live, we have policies in place. I got asked a little bit about, well, what if we have protesting, unless something like that comes up? Simply put, we had very often, we went to the warrants in Fayetteville to help out. Kind of, kind of seeing and talking to them on how, how they did things and how. Of course, we're just like anybody else, we're a small department. We would have to get help from the outside. The Fayetteville started online. We knew about that before, before it ever happened. We saw that it was coming. And just like Fayetteville reached out, we would reach out. We'd reach out to the other departments to determine on how big it was and get the help that we needed. I know this area around here is very good to work with each other. I know Fayetteville, they have farms and cave springs, a bunch of parks to help out. So, the deal with the parks, we are doing our best to keep them out of the river, at Riverside. With our manpower, it's virtually impossible, but we are trying. We are going down there and telling them. Not that they don't get back in ten minutes later. And how it's working right now, we're jumping in between parks. We're jumping between Carter Park and Riverside. Carter Park last Saturday had what we estimated to be around four hundred people. So, this, this week, what I did is I came up, we just met today. I met with Lieutenant Hayden. I met with Damon Fish. I'm meeting later with the environmental guy, and we were discussing on ways to clean up and control the crowd down there. And that's not only the crowds down there, because here's what gets me. We go down there and watch thirty minutes, and we've got a DWI. Well, that gets my guy to the jail, but then we've got three hundred and eighty more people at that park that are living. I've got kids in those neighborhoods that play every day. And I got, what was it? Last Sunday or Saturday?
Saturday.
Two truckloads full.
That was in the parking lot.
In our parking lot, in our trash cans, two truckloads full of alcohol. That tells me a lot of people left that place and popped the gate. So, Washington County has agreed to send officers out there twice per shift that can get with us and go down there and start to try and clean that up. Damon Fish said they were on board with that. I'm switching schedules around a little bit, where we're gonna have two guys covering for those peak hours for all weekends, all the time. And we're gonna see if we can't put a little pressure on them to knock it off. We wanna, I'm worried. I don't want one of those kids down there unpleasant or on Riverwood hit by a drunk driver. So, that's current what we're doing on that.
Yeah, I see. Hang on just a minute. Are there any, any questions or comments from the council, chief, concerning what we're doing at the parks? Or what we're, what we're doing, period, as far as reporting? Okay, go ahead. I'm sorry.
Hello, West Forker. We posted no trespassing signs on that side, and we plan on getting more. Our survey done, and we're going to post them on the east side of the river as well. And the area that they're walking from Carter Park into that is private property. And so, we're going to post private property signs, no trespassing, and maybe that one.
Yeah, that's, that's all gonna be your land, correct?
Just, just a corner of it, to the south of it, we looked on the county maps, and then St. John and Damon Castile.
What did that choose?
So, part of that's his, but the cart where they're walking from the parking lot and going down in there crosses over what will be our property after we close. So, we're not.
Because it's all to, we want to clean up. It's a mess down there.
We, we have, we have what we hope to be big plans for the area and for the community. And so, obviously, like my wife said, we don't have our survey yet. But if there's anybody from the city that, that has a pretty good idea of where the city's parcel is, it's behind the baseball field and that the private parcel begins, before we get our survey done, and then I jump at the opportunity to take a walk down there with you. Well, I'll post it.
Yes. And so, just so that you guys know, and we just talked about this, but the wreck hole itself is not inside the city limits. Okay, so you're aware of that?
Yes.
So, we do all we can down there, but, but there are very real.
Cars at the city park and walking across it with their alcohol.
Yeah, no, I.
And then trespassing.
Yeah, no, I totally get that part. I just want you to be aware that there, there are, while we do a help and assist, we do have to get permission before we can do that, and.
There may come a time when I have Washington County speak to you personally and say, hey, this is the part I don't want trespassed on. And they're doing it, because that's gonna give them more.
Well, and to, and to be honest, I had no idea that the city was doing anything to the police in the area. So, that, that makes me happy to begin with, that there's, that there's any efforts being made, because I was under the assumption that it was just solely county. So, I do appreciate that, chief.
Yes, ma'am.
I can tell that from someone who lives on the other parcel, the parcel you're purchasing and then the wreck hole, I own the parcel next to that, and I've seen more people on the river this year than I've seen in the eighteen years that I've been here.
The, the, the trash is what.
Damon, yeah, Damon Fish did tell me, there've been more people at their rivers and lakes this year than they've had in years.
Well, public pools aren't open.
Right. So, we're gonna get that, but they need to be respectful enough to pick up their trash and respect the problem.
And not trespass on private property.
Right. Yes.
All right, anyone else? Chief, were you finished with your report?
Yes.
Okay. So, I would like to take just a second to just remind and say thank you, chief, for, for taking the initiative on that, for, for getting that started, trying to get that cleaned up. I agree with you. The last thing we want is a drunk driver coming out of there. So, thank you for that, and also want to say thank you to you and your officers for what you guys do. And I think over the past three years, you've made significant strides in, in this community of, of making this a more community police force. I was thinking just the other day, with everything going on in the national, on the national scene, I was thinking of our Fourth of July, which we will have this year. It may be different, but we will have. But how you and your officers have stood down there in the heat, in those vests and uniforms, constantly rotating someone at that front gate, and how many people come in and, and know you guys, talk to you guys. How many people come up, and it's, it's almost like they can't wait to tell you guys that they've got this straightened out, or they got that taken care of, their life's getting better. And that, that just struck me this week, with everything else going on last week. And I wanted to say thank you for the, the effort that you and your men have put into, to doing that in this community. All right, Isaac, give us the public works update.
The survey in Fayetteville is coming along. We had our construction meeting right after our department meeting today. Randy from Royal, our board, thanks for, just a little bit of head schedule. So, hopefully, the weather will cooperate and they can continue on that trend. Dean and Alan from ANRC has put us in for an award. I'm not sure what that entails, but it's, I think it's called Aquarius Award, something to do with water. So, they're looking to win that, and we would be able to collect that award at the Capitol. Robinson sidewalk is complete. I think they went on reimbursement. We can post a book on that. Yeah, I think it looks fantastic. I think they walked it. We took Ferris baby on guard more fence down there to, to try to deter people from going to the river across there. We, we did find nine water leaks, all small leaks, but we kept them prepared. So, I don't know if we'll replace our water losses next month. And we are starting back to replacing the water. We started off today, probably moved home next week. And I just started some discussions with John Barnes about replacing some there for a class.
One question.
Yes, sir.
The RCP pipe that was placed on the main road on the park approach, where the sidewalk meets the, I'm sorry, I'm drawing a blank on the road. Going around the curve.
The open wide.
When do you think you'll place that RCP in the ditch? Is that gonna be a part of a sidewalk thing? I noticed you out there with, looked like an engineer type yesterday.
We are. If you don't have the sidewalk coming out from Carter Park.
Correct.
That will no longer meet Main Street, or from Riverside, sorry. We took that out. Our sidewalk from Doe will ferry on right all around the corner. You won't be able to cross right there.
Okay.
It's, it's kind of a dangerous spot there to try to cross. I've had a lane run right out in front of me, because the sidewalk makes the sidewalk right out the road. So, we're gonna take that out. Our sidewalk will, maybe not this year, but next year, we will ferry all the way around into the park.
Okay.
So. So. And then, I, one other thing, we did request, of course, more of the money from our, uh, to help replace some sewer ducts out. We, we, I put you on the TV, but I give, give time, so, so we are trying to order more, so. And Nick and I are gonna sit down and try to hammer out some other plots that we need to look at. I don't wanna, I don't wanna delve back and look at stuff that may look bad when they get to SSDS before the rehab, so. So we gotta, we gotta do some number crunching too, 'cause Christie and I are in excellent, but, so y'all are gonna sit down with me Friday morning.
Okay. I, uh, have not talked to you, uh, about this, but if, if you get a chance, will you send, send someone up to, uh, the sidewalk there by Seek Church and look at the sidewalk, uh, there's, I don't know if it's in the sidewalk or if it's something written on the sidewalk, uh, but just walk up through there and see if, if, what, what that is and if we need to do something about it. It, it looks, there was a picture sent to me, it looks like a swastika, but I don't know that that's what it is.
Is it on, on their side or on White Street, Main Street?
I'm not a hundred percent sure. It just said it was near Seek Church and, and I haven't. But, and like I said, it may not be anything, I, and from the picture, it's hard to tell, and, and there was some confusion, uh, with, with the person who took the picture, so just look at it, and if it's, if it's something that needs to be fixed, let's get it, get it repaired. Anything else for Isaac? Thank you, sir. Chad, you'll give us parts update?
Uh, well, I'll just elaborate on some of the things that's been mentioned already. Uh, as far as Riverside goes, uh, you know, the best answer that I think you can give to people for opening swimming down there, uh, is, you know, when we feel comfortable as a city to have crowds of four or five hundred people down there, because that's what's been happening, you know, swimming down there. We did open the parking lot, we opened the pavilion, there was probably a hundred people down there Saturday, which is much more manageable than some of the crowds that we're getting, and it's still not an issue. There was more trash than what we had. It still wasn't, wasn't bad, and, and I don't know many problems other than, than just trying to use them out of the river. So that, that's where we're at with the swimming. When we do open that up, we, we're gonna get those crowds back. Now, when we do open that up, I think that's gonna help alleviate some of the problems in the wreck hole as well, 'cause we have moved a lot of people from Riverside to the wreck hole. Uh, as far as parks is concerned on the wreck hole, you know, it is a parking issue. Right now, we don't have a lot of activity going on down there. We do have some teams practicing this and that. Uh, there's some, someone that's reached out to me about a possible tournament down there later in the summer. There could be an issue with the parking. There is more trash, there's a lot of trash. It's still nothing compared to what would be Riverside after a busy weekend. But on our part, it's not a big strain yet until we do have activity down there where the parking could become an issue. We're also looking at a couple of possible ways to even make it harder. We've tried to make it as far as walk as possible, hoping that further they have to walk, that less people will come. And we're looking at maybe some ways to even make it cut off. But again, I think once Riverside's open back up fully, if we take down the banners and, and we never allowed anyone to swim or not allowed them to swim.
Right.
But if we take the banners down and they think it's open to swim again, that's gonna bring some issues off the wreck hole as well. Uh.
And just to, just to clarify, it's not that we don't want people coming to West Fork, but the ones that are coming, we know what they're, they're bringing their trash and they're leaving it with us.
We want them to come enjoy the parks and the river. It, it's, it's a draw and it's, it's a great thing to enjoy, but we're not being respectful in any manner, uh, in our way to rules, or whatever. And also at Riverside, we just can't have those kind of crowds right now.
Exactly.
I, I don't think as a city we're ready.
Right.
To have those types of crowds. It's not fair to the police department to try to handle those crowds either. Well, that's where we're at as far as parks are concerned with those issues. Uh, we did open up the parking lot, we did open the pavilions in town, and to my knowledge, that hasn't been a problem with increasing any people gathering, there are any issues there. So we have, we've been just maintaining the parks, uh, keeping, oh, working on small projects and doing what we can without our other programs going on right now. The committee, uh, we haven't, we still haven't had a meeting, we're, we're debating about having a meeting, uh, this month to, to talk about the Fourth of July, uh, but we're trying to, to make those some decisions there as well. So, as, I think all y'all got an email about our test shoot that's gonna, was supposed to take place last night. We postponed it tomorrow night, so what we're trying to do there is to see if it's feasible to have, we're trying to increase, uh, the height range of our, of our, of our fireworks display so that residents, it, it won't come to the park or that if we allow them not to come to the park, can be seen at their house. This is really our goal, is to put on a display that can be seen from most of the residents, uh, without having to leave their home, or could find somewhere in the town if they can see it. One reason to be able to do that, we have to increase our fog zone, that's why we're looking possibly not allowing it on up here at Carter Park. So tomorrow night, hopefully somewhere between nine and nine thirty, step outside and, and report back to me on how that, how that looks from here. Because we're trying to get as much information, and we are gonna forewarn the citizens by putting Facebook posts tomorrow. And also, I think we're gonna ask them to comment back as well, a lot of time, on their report on how it was from their location. Uh, that's, that's an option, that we're, we are looking at other options. The lady that puts on a fireworks display is, uh, this, this type of event is being considered several cities in our area. It's, it, it may be the way to go, uh, but we're gonna see how it goes tomorrow night before we make decisions.
Any questions from the council?
I do have one more name for the memorial, uh.
Okay.
Updated. Uh, Caleb Patrick, who is the, uh, local Boy Scouts and is working on his Eagle project. He, he got all the final proposals, paperwork done, and I signed it last week. He submitted it, he shouldn't hear back. He's got approval locally, but he has to get the final approval from Boy Scouts of America. And so he's hoping to get that back this week hopefully, and he's just working on organizing his volunteers and working on donations still, but he, his goal is to start on that, uh, project for the pavilion, uh, later this month.
Fantastic.
We should have some hoping late this month or early next month that, that should, uh, complete it.
I think Tracy has a question or comment for you.
I was just gonna ask, if you're putting on Facebook, what pages are you gonna post it on?
Well, we're gonna put on the C page, and we're gonna reach out to the department heads that have a, have a page as well, uh, to share it as much as possible.
Well, I think when you put up a list with a little bit of everything.
Yeah, we can make, yeah, we try to make sure, uh, we repost and, uh, to share it to that page as well. That reaches a lot of people.
That's what I think.
But I already talked to Chief and, uh, about all their pages as well, library. Uh, another option, uh, Shannon, just briefly about that, is, uh, if we do an event like that, we're, we're looking at a way to put it on Facebook Live as well.
Very cool.
Try to. So it can be seen that page as well.
Shannon is our new, uh.
We have.
Tech services.
Yes, when we make that decision, then we'll work on the details.
All right, anything else for Chad?
Please report back to me after tomorrow.
Christie gonna give us her finance report?
You gonna skip Mark? He's sitting right there.
Not very exciting, Mark.
Four years, four years, chief's first mistake of my.
Uh, really, I don't know about it. We just started training back last Monday. Uh, thank goodness it's gonna be nice weather, so we do most of it outside, so we keep up with our social distancing. They are starting a, uh, Enjoy PPE class, which is what all the new people have to go through. So we have three of our own new recruits that wanna go through it, and we're, we do have several from neighboring fire departments coming through as well, uh, God helps everybody. Uh, our call volume's been about average, uh, pretty weather related, but true removal on road. Well, those things better than cats and trees, so. We, we do wanna try to probably later in the year, spend a lot of, crawl by everything go, try to put away community wide, stop the bleed crash, uh, once we can get all particulars and see how we can do that, we're kinda letting everybody know more about it. Kinda like everybody, little heads up, we're gonna, maybe we can include CPR training in that as well, uh, for something to come again. Stop the bleed is just basic, stopping the bleed, so it's nothing gory, nothing, nothing related to it. So it'd be a really good class for that, and, and that's all I got.
Any questions for Chief Myers? Thank you, sir. Christie, would you like to give the finance report now?
Of course. And so our incomes have increased by thirty-two thousand so far this year. And our departments as a whole are ninety-one thousand dollars under budget. Uh, we have two departments that are showing over budget right now, which are the police, um, and the admin and justice. I really don't think those are totally related yet, um, but I think that those are the two departments that we will see probably have issues later in this year. Um, our sales tax, our city's sales tax is up thirteen percent, uh, this year over where it was this time last year. Um, our county sales tax is up almost seven percent. Um, I think, Mayor and I talked, I think our sales are up in, in our parks, larger generals and so forth. Uh, but we also think a lot of that might be online sales, because that started, we started collecting on that this year and had in the past, that had been a law, uh, so now it is, and so I think that's probably helping also. We have a lot of more of our work and stuff online, I've had in the past. Is that all I've got?
So that, uh, that sales tax number, uh, were up forty-five thousand year over year. If you reverse back into that, that's approximately an extra one point five million dollars that's been spent in, in West Fork, uh, to produce that amount of sales tax. And Christie and I were talking, most of that happened in March and April. So, that's a lot of money, and, and it's such a small community. We thank you, sir, for coming, coming from Huntsville over here to spend some money, uh, but, but it is, it's a lot of money in, in our community that's been spent, uh, and. Fascinating. Any questions for Christie? Nope. Okay. So old business. Uh, we have the recycle center on there. We don't have anything to present yet, correct, Isaac?
No, she did, like I said, she's working on the agreement, uh, I'll pretty much just think that the trailers will belong, lost them down, they will bring them over here, they'll do all the transport as long as we man it on Saturdays, so. And she and I talked about that, and I'm good with that, but, uh, I, I was at work every weekend that after the end of this year, that's coming to an end, nobody will be, have to make their sort of plan on weekends, so. So, they may be hungry, but it won't be a problem, so, so that kinda works out pretty well.
Okay. So I would ask if the council would table this, uh, once again, we're getting bad about this, uh, old, old business.
I'll make a motion to table it.
Just a second, I can.
Have a motion in second. Did you get both of those in? All right. All those in favor say yes. Those opposed, no. That motion carries. Uh, the second, second piece of old business, uh, we talked last month about doing a practice Zoom meeting for the council meeting. We do have that scheduled for June sixteenth. Has everyone on the council opened up Zoom at this point? Miss June?
Every single day.
Good. So, I'm glad you mentioned that, Dawn, uh, and I thank you for volunteering, sir. So what we may wanna do is have a central location for anyone who is not familiar with Zoom, who, who feels uncomfortable, having somewhere where someone could help them, uh, navigate it. Do we have anyone that would be interested in, in something like that? Like if we had it, uh, maybe, maybe even a city admin, and if, if Dawn was there kinda saying, hey, this is how you do this. No, what I'm asking is, Dawn's already volunteered, I'm not worried about that. I'm asking, does anybody feel that they're gonna need that?
I do.
You do? Okay, perfect. Um, and actually, the library may work out better, Shannon, uh, in all seriousness.
I've actually already talked to Shannon and asked for her help.
I have too, I just have to. And then, do we have any residents that would at this point, um, give us your solemn word that you will attend that Zoom meeting? Paula, thank you. You can report to the library, and Sha- Shannon will help you with Zoom. You've got, you can do it on your phone. Okay? Okay. So I, I don't wanna, I don't wanna put a lot of people in the library, but I do want, I do wanna make sure that we get some citizen input on it, uh, because I want us as a council to have to, to recognize a community member. I want us to, I want us to see the whole thing, uh, before we have to do the, you know, if, God forbid, we have to do this, uh, for real sometime. That way we're prepared and, and this doesn't turn into a mess, so.
I watched the court report meeting on Zoom, and if it's like that, man.
That's what I'm saying, that's why we're.
That was terrible.
That's why we're, that's why we're doing this, uh.
I'm not sure terrible does it justice.
So we have, we have one citizen volunteer. How about you guys, you new to town? You doing anything on June, June sixteenth at six-thirty?
It is, it is June sixteenth?
Yeah. If you guys.
Yeah, true, so I'm asking.
Hey, bring them into the meeting, we're gonna have a disruption. All right. So does everybody on the council have access to Zoom? Yeah? Okay, all the department heads officially have it. Um, and we do, as far as the council, we do very good at, uh, remaining orderly for the most part. Uh, but I think it's gonna be important when we get in a Zoom meeting, uh, to be recognized before we start trying to talk over someone, and, and I'll take extra care to make sure that we, we get everybody recognized if, if somebody's got something to say. And that, in the meeting, I am gonna want, uh, we'll do roll call, and I will ask, uh, everybody some kinda question. So at some point, I want everybody to have to unmute and talk.
I do work that night, Mayor, so.
Do what?
I said I do work that night, so I might be on the fence.
Okay. Take a look.
Ten to minute in on things.
It, it can be done on your phone.
Well, we got computers in the car.
There's not a lot going on over at Farmington, so. All right, all right, so, but that, that is my expectation, that we all get a chance to unmute, we get, we, we talk, we hear everybody else. I don't want this to drag on like this meeting has, but, uh, fifteen, twenty minutes, thirty minutes tops, so we're paying, paying three hundred maximum for the meeting, so, uh.
Why are we paying somebody?
So that we don't end up in a mess like some of the other people have. We have somebody that's gonna moderate it. It's a professional, they've already bought the software, so we don't have to, here's part of the issue with Zoom. If, if we go get a free Zoom, uh, account, and I invite everybody to come, number one, it's easier for somebody to hack into that and show us something we don't wanna see. Number two, we're limited to a hundred users, and so we've just told, uh, depending on which side you look at, twenty-three hundred people, you're not invited to our meeting, out of a twenty-four hundred figure community. So, that's why they have professional software, as many people as want to attend, they can handle it. Uh, we have somebody that's used to managing a room. When somebody raises their hand with a question, they're used to the whole deal, so that's why.
And a court report meeting, that's a lot bigger.
Any other questions?
Hi, Abby.
Yes, please.
On your table, there's, I think it's Julia, but she, she's actually going to be emailing those starting tomorrow to each department head and city councilor. I just kind of wanted to see what she was going to be sending. The link to the meeting will be on there. But I didn't want you guys to get email because nobody didn't know who it was and ignore it. The link will be on there. We will also put that on obviously our Facebook page. We'll get all the Facebook pages, we'll move everything, all that, so that that gets out there for the community to participate in that. But that's kind of, she kind of gives you some steps on there and some, a resource that I think you can go to if you've never looked at Zoom or whatever. So that you can prepare for that meeting, so you're not, the first time you're getting on there is not five minutes before the meeting, so that's.
And if you'll notice, there is the option to just join by phone. So if someone doesn't have a smartphone or, or some sort of device, they can just call a number and they can speak and they can hear what's going on in the meeting. I would ask that, we remember we are, we are being seen, even though we are in the comfort of our home. No pajamas, maybe. All right, any questions concerning that? Okay, let's, so can we, that's old business, we'll just, let's take a motion to move that off and be done with it. I'll make that motion.
Second.
Okay, we got a motion and second to hold our Zoom meeting on June sixteenth at six thirty. All those in favor say yes. Those opposed, no. That motion carries. All right, that brings us into new business. Item one of new business is to approve up to twenty thousand dollars of spending for the library, or from the library building fund. This is what Shannon was talking about earlier when she said she's got some furniture picked out for the new space. This is money that was set aside for the library and we haven't used it on construction. Basically, we're saying, we have, we've been holding tight on this money, but there is some furniture we need to fill up that space. And I don't know, well, they haven't been in there. Shannon got this huge table, a conference table, it's huge, beautiful. She didn't get any chairs for it. She got the table for like ten bucks and it's probably a four thousand dollar table. But we need some chairs and probably not plastic ones. So that's what we're talking about in this, allowing her to spend some money. John, are you making fun of me over there?
Well, just a ten dollar table and ten thousand dollar chairs.
Wait till you see this table. All right, any questions on that?
I made the motion that we approved the spending up to twenty thousand.
Up to?
Up to twenty thousand dollars.
All second. Motion and second, all those in favor say yes. Those opposed, no. That motion carries. Item two, this is just another, while we were under that declaration of emergency, before that expired, I did approve a separate lot split that wasn't in last month's council meeting packet. It was right after that meeting that I approved a lot split. And so just making you guys aware that I did make a lot split, that it didn't go through the planning commission. Do you guys have any questions about that? Item three, a change order for the library to stucky paint in the amount of three thousand two hundred and fifty dollars. It's added prep work for police area and tape and mud, fire rated ceiling in the court corridor. And Christie, this will take care of us as far as those contracts are concerned? So Christie's trying to get those closed out, for the most part, they are. One company says we've already paid them, Christie says we have not. Another company, they've had some ownership changes and there's, they're having a hard time getting us a bill out, but both of those bills are.
Let's do three thousand dollars together.
Okay, so we have this last change order and then those two things is all that is hanging out there. We have closed the bonds.
So the project manager says that that's it remaining for contract closeout?
Yes.
I'm making a motion, we approve the change order.
Motion and second, all those in favor say yes. Those opposed, no. That motion carries. Item four, update and add the following items to the police department policies. So John has went through a, is that a federal audit or a state audit, John?
State, it's my understanding the state is kind of taking over, they're joining with the federal. But it was a state audit.
So they, they came through, did an audit of the police department. Their recommendations were directed toward police department policies in the areas of email, patch management policy, personally owned device policy and physical protection policy, user account management policy. John, you want to give us a little bit of what?
It's just, you know, it's the normal stuff that you already know what you're doing. They just wanted in writing. As far as physical, physical security, they want, they went as far, we have to have a authorized personnel on every door. They want us to have badges. If you're not, you know, they want us to keep a book of everybody that's CLA certified. And if they're not, if they're coming to our building, they got to be escorted, they got to have a badge or a visitors thing. Personal cell phone, that has nothing to do with us because none of us give ACIC information on our cell phone, but they want that in place because some departments are doing that. So email, that's just saying, don't be emailing their personal information. Unless you have a, which I thought was funny, because we told them we have a Google account that's HIPAA certified. And he laughed and he said, well, we're not HIPAA, we're FBI certified. So if I send an email, now it has to be encrypted, but not only encrypted, encrypted up to FBI standards, the way they say it's going to be encrypted. So my answer to that is, we don't send any more emails. We'll put the policy in place, but we don't send any more.
Emails containing personally.
Containing their information. ACIC information. It's just, this is the stuff that they pretty much say you have to have.
Any questions?
What's Riverside agree?
I'll make a motion.
I say that.
We have a motion and second, all those in favor say yes. Those opposed, no. That motion carries. And so item five is our added item. It's this contract with, with Garver Engineering. And it's the contract to, to host that meeting, Don. The contract actually, and Christie, can you send an email with this to the council? Oh, did you get one for everyone? Okay.
I made a few little changes.
The, the contract is basically, they, they've put in the contract that there are other services they offer. Not that we are retaining them for any of those services, but this contract includes those services should we want anything else from it. Do what?
Walter might someday with all that stuff coming in.
Oh, absolutely. All right, any questions on that contract? Don, did I sufficiently answer?
Yes, and you just said a maximum that we would pay them would be three hundred.
Three hundred.
Second.
Motion and second, all those in favor say yes. Those opposed, no. And that was to pass the amended contract after attorney kickleg?
Yeah. I'll get you one to sign.
Okay. The last item on our agenda are the mayor's comments. I think everyone saw the letter from Ms. Babion. In the packet, she was just thanking the city, specifically Isaac, his crew and the Boulder Construction for their, their work down there on Robinson. I hope everybody has went by and looked at that. It was a really good project, it looks really good. So anyway, I always like it when somebody reaches out with positive comments for us. Ms. Babion is, she'll let you know if you're doing right or doing wrong, so. Lastly, Christie said, you really want me to put this in mayor's comments? And I said, yes, I want to kick this dead horse. Zoom meeting, June sixteenth. Prepare yourself prior to the meeting. If you do want some assistance, reach out to Shannon prior to that meeting and meet her at the library.
When is that again?
With that, John, I would ask for a motion to adjourn.
I'll make that motion.
Motion and second, all those in favor say yes. Those opposed, no. Thank you, guys.